There we go. Okay, I was just gonna ask Abby to get the recording going, so. We, we are recording 7:04. I'll call the meeting to order. Next on the agenda is roll call and seating of alternates. So I see Anne Creme is here. Scott Person is here. Steve Nelson is here. Leanne Hutchinson, I do not see online, and she was expected to, to not be here, so I will seat Susan England for Leanne. And I am here then as well. So Abby, that has Leanne, Anne Blanchard, and Kevin Harson, and not present this evening. Moving on to item three, addition or changes to the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or changes?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mark Brants, counsel to commission, you may have a change. We'll, we'll see how it evolves. Right now, you have on your agenda, the modification of the BB special permit, but my understanding is that, that Mr. BB is amending his application to be a Class A kennel, which is, which is not a special permit, and therefore does not require a public hearing. Okay, you haven't advertised a public hearing for that application, but you should be okay with that. And the only thing is why I have the intention to mission, I just want to introduce Andrew Morin. Andrew just joined our firm and is just, just graduated from law school. And we are confident we'll pass the bar when we get the results next Friday, but he'll be attending lots of commission meetings to sort of see what it is we do. So Andrew is just listening in on us to see what's happening.
Okay, very good. And just so you know, Mark, it sounds like there's a little bit of a bandwidth issue coming. You, you do cut out now and then. I think we're able to get the intent of what you were, you were saying there, and especially good news on the application for a Class A kennel not being a special permit. I was going to change the the thing to approval of special permit for a kennel at 241 Route 6. Now, I guess I will change it to approval of permit for a kennel at 241 Route 6. So Abby will just get rid of the words from between of and permit on the first action item, and that will be the only change that I have to the agenda. And thanks for that timely input, Mark. You know, when we were looking through our regulations this morning, Jim thought it was not a special permit, but we talked ourselves into it, and then we thought we had a clever way of getting out of the public hearing. So you saved the day by making us just right. Thanks for attending. If there are no other changes to the agenda, call on the commission to, you know, all, all in favor of the changes discussed, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so that motion carries 500. Any public comment on anything that's not on the agenda? And I don't think there's probably anybody else here for that, but now's the time if there's a public comment. Okay, hearing none. We'll move down to old business. And the, the first item of old business is Scott, your, your permit for the Type A kennel, the 241 Route 6. So if you can run us through what's changed from the last time. I was looking online just before I got on for the meeting, and I did not see the updated form that we had discussed. So the other commission members are not aware of, of your changes, so now's a good time to let us know the, what, what you got planned there.
So after our meeting this morning, we realized that we need, we didn't need the commercial kennel type C, and we actually need the commercial kennel type A license. So I'm looking to get permission to continue to run my business under the commercial kennel type A license with the opportunity to come in front of the board in the future and go for my type C license.
Okay, that that sounds good. And Jim, how about running us through where we stand on the appropriate portions of the application there?
You'd like me to run through the checklist?
Not in detail. If you can just update us on those couple of things that we did not have checked off before our meeting today, when we were just making sure we had everything ready to, to go.
Okay, I mean, we, we spoke about lighting, and there is, there is some limited flood lighting for customers. It does not leave the, the site. And Scott's operation is largely in, in daylight hours, obviously winter evening encroaches, but apparently what he has has been sufficient. I did ask the fire marshal for comment. I did not hear from him. So should the mission choose to act on the application, we could certainly put a condition in in that, in approval, if that's the way they go. Allowing for any, any modifications required by the fire marshal. There was discussion about heating and cooling, and what it came down to was there are basically, we're talking about pretty tough dogs, and they're just not in bitter cold, they're just not taken out in the heat, they're, they're taken care of. It really is not an issue, doesn't appear to be an issue under state, state regulations either. Other than that, I don't recall any changes. We just got a clarification. I'm really the number of dogs that are, are, will be on site, and the origi, I believe Scott's original letter alluded to the number of dogs are there over the course of the day. And in reality, we regulate the number of dogs that are there at any given point in time. The maximum being, I believe, 10 under the Type A. And it seems to operate under, under those parameters. That's about all I have as far as update.
Okay. What I'd like to do, and Abby, if you can allow me to share my screen, I just want to go through with the commission members, the difference between the Class A kennel and the Class C kennel, so we can all see why we're gonna be successful here tonight, at least a better shot at it than we did before.
You should have permission now.
Okay, thank you. And Okay, so hopefully everybody can see our kennel regulations on the screen now. Yep. And, and so, you know, we looked through the definitions last time, and we didn't really talk about the Type A kennel. But essentially, it's designed for, used to accommodate 10 or fewer dogs. And when we were talking to Scott BB, you know, he sometimes has up to 20 dogs there a day to do the one hour training sessions. My take on, on the Type A kennel is that if he is boarding less than 10 dogs during the day, and he's not boarding any of them overnight, even though he's got people that bring their dog in for an hour, have a lesson, take the dog away, I didn't think that fit in that number, and I was satisfied that he met the requirements with the Type A kennel by having, you know, boarding fewer than 10 dogs. So that's, that's a difference there. Last week, we went over the general requirements, and so I'm not going to go over those again, because if he complied with them for a Type C kennel, he certainly is in compliance for a Type A. But then we came down to the specifics for the Type A kennel. And you know, our, our regulations, and maybe that's a typo that needs fixed, special permitted uses, talks about, you know, a commercial kennel, limited commercial, all, all these things here. But there was only three requirements for the Type A kennel. Permitted in all use districts except the flood prone district, and we, we saw that it wasn't there. Minimum lot size, three acres. He's, he's got like 200 acres out there that he's using. And the minimum front edge, rear sideline to the doghouse pen or run, you know, shall be at least 75 feet, and he's, you know, got a couple of hundred feet there at least. So that's, that's the Type A as opposed to the Type B for the Type C, where we got into the requirement that the indoor housing facilities that comply with state regs for commercial kennels be provided. So we, we were working hard on trying to figure out if there was a way to meet the indoor kennel facilities. There's not at this point, because he's got five kennels in the barn instead of the, the 20 that he would have to have. And that's why when we decided to go the route of the Class A kennel, that seemed to make it fairly easy at that point to go in compliance with the regulations. So that's all that. We'll go back up and, and take a quick look at the application procedure and in all the plans and data called for, the planning and zoning commission application form have been submitted, including his, his check for the special permit, and, and if this is not a special permit, Jim, you can, you can adjudicate whether or not we owe Scott any money back on that. The, the plot plan, same plan picture that we were looking at last meeting. The detailed description of proposed operations that is online, is there anybody who, who didn't get a chance to, to take a look at that? Thought that was a, a good write-up that told us what he wanted to do, and other information the commission deems appropriate, if there's anything there, we could talk about it in his fee for $65. And maybe that's just a fee to the town, whether or not it's a special permit. I don't know. We'll, we'll hash our way through that. That's not the big part of the deal. So at this point, you know, I would open the floor to the commission members to ask Scott BB if he has any, if you have any questions or, or comments on, on his application.
Well, I've, I've read it all, read all the different classifications, and I, I believe that that's just was a good thing to do the Type A.
Okay. Anybody at all have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Mark Brants, there, there is a site plan that depicts what is happening there, what is proposed?
Yes, there is. And, and we talked this morning about making sure that that actually got filed this time.
Okay, all right, good.
So if there are no other questions for the applicant, I'm looking for somebody to make a motion concerning the application. And I guess to speed up the process, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a Type A kennel at 241 Route 6.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Any, any discussion on the application?
Is there, are there any, do you need any conditions? I mean, I
The, the only condition
Is, is it understood that the I, I know you mentioned that there were five indoor kennels. Is that a limit? Could it be up to 10? Just as long as you're clear what you're approving, that's all I care about.
So at this point, he has five kennels in the barn, and I think it was six outdoor kennels. And so that gets him up to the facility to handle at least 10 dogs now. Is, as Mr. BB stated when we came on, he would like at some point in the future to upgrade the barn to or at least have the opportunity to upgrade the barn for a Type C kennel, but does not have those indoor kennel facilities at this point. And so I consider that he's got 11 kennels.
But what's it being approved now?
Yes.
Okay, so so do you want to clarify, should the motion clarify that that's what's being approved now?
Well, the motion was specific that it was a Type A kennel. The, the condition of approval would be that we continue to pursue the approval by the fire marshal. And, and that is the only outstanding condition of approval that, that I think is appropriate for tonight. Anything else, Attorney Brands?
No, for me, as, as long as it's clear what, how many dogs or how many kennels you're
Up to 10. Up to 10.
And he's got the facilities to handle that many.
Chairman, there's been discussion about the fire marshals weighing in on it, but I didn't really see it make a way, make its way into that motion as a condition. It was merely discussed as I, as I heard it.
Okay, good point. And let me ask you back, Jim, with this being a Type A kennel and not having to go through the Heinz 57 questionnaire of all the questions there, do we need? Do we need the fire marshal's approval still? And it might be because it's such a lengthy driveway. I don't know.
No, I would say there's no specific requirement. It's just, you know, it's, no, if, if it's not a special permit, then I, I don't see it falling under it as, as an absolute requirement. But it could certainly be added as a recommendation.
Okay. And, and I think I will allow you to fight, to follow up with the fire marshal. I will not amend the I will not amend the motion to include, you know, the fire marshal on that. If, if the fire marshal thinks we need to have a bigger turnaround space or something like that, I'm sure that Mr. BB would be happy to, you know, comply with that. He is, he's trying to run a good facility out there. And, and I'm sure that we'll get there. If not, we'll, we'll take care of that when he comes back with his Class C kennel, because then it will be a requirement. Any last discussion? Okay, we'll go, I'll call for a roll call vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes 500. Congratulations, Mr. BB.
Thank you all. I appreciate all the work and help to get here tonight. Thank you.
So I think, Jim, you'll be ready to sign that form that, that Scott needs here. Like tomorrow, was there anything you need before that happens?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, very good. So that completes the first item under old business. Then move on to item B under old business, review requests for proposals for preparing, preparation of an affordable housing plan. And so all the commission members should have gotten, we, we got three proposals that, that came in. One was unexpected, didn't know about it until we went there to open them up on, on September 1st. The other one was from a fellow named Don Poland. Both, both of those two submittals were very professionally done, and they look very good. The, the third submittal that we, we got was from Bill Warner. And while the first two came in at $15,000, Bill Warner's came in at 6,900. So and if you, does anybody have any comments on the, the write-ups that we looked through?
No.
I reviewed all three, and I was, should I tell you who I'm most comfortable with, or is that not appropriate now?
Nope, this is a, a good time.
Okay, okay, I read all three, and both the Gorman and York, York and the SLR were very impressive, very detailed. I was actually not comfortable with the Gorman in York, York application, partially because it seemed to be full of planning jargon, which was hard to, you know, pick apart and understand what they were saying. It wasn't really written in plain English, which made me concerned, especially when they did the public presentation, how clear it was, and if they were just gonna stand up there and razzle dazzle people. And the other thing I didn't like about it was their payment plan, which was every month you would pay them a set amount of $3,000. It wasn't tied into completion of the various tasks, and I have found in the past it's easier, and you have more control over managing the contract if, if everything is tied into, you know, production of a document or completion of a task. Um, Bill Warner's was not as professionally done or as razzle dazzle as the others. But what I have worked with him, and the commission has worked with him for probably close to 20 years on, on the production of two plans of development, and also when he was our, our planning, our zoning agent, and, and I found that he was very easy to work with. He was very familiar with the different trends. And just before I left the commission was when we were completing the latest plan of conservation and development. He alerted us all to the whole issue of the affordable housing and the fact that Andover was currently facing a, a he didn't call it a crisis, crisis is my word, that we were one of the older towns, and there was a whole issue of because of the way the housing stock had been developed, and the zoning had been developed, the problems that this town was facing. So he was really present in, in what's going on. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with his work, and I know that the products that he produces are high quality. So if I were to rank them, I would rank him first, SLR second, and Gorman your third.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Any, anybody else have any comments on the three proposals that we received?
Yeah, I agree. I think SLR was the most professional, the most comprehensive, and the most complete out of the three. I don't have any background as you just described, you know, with the others, but, you know, having written a lot of proposals, I think it, you know, it actually included a, you know, a timeline. It broke everything down in detail. The, the other one that was professional, I thought just provided kind of a, a rolodex of their capabilities of who they have on their team. But it really didn't, it wasn't a customized solution for us in our town, I didn't think. SLR also had some good case studies in there, like the town of Mansfield, et cetera. So I, I thought it was the most comprehensive overall.
Okay. I do, you know, it was interesting, well. It may have been an error. But when we requested the grant money from the state, I did not request $15,000, so we don't have $15,000 to spend. We did request a little bit more than, than Bill has listed there, the 6,900, and I guess, you know, if we had money left over, that would give us an opportunity to hire some legal service to maybe help us get the, I think the plan is gonna tell us what to go do, and then we're gonna be having to change our I don't think it's gonna change our regulations for us, and so I'm gonna need some assistance probably after, and there might be a little bit of money left over to support doing some of that. But certainly, you know, Bill Warner, as Susan said, you know, wrote our last two plan of conservation and developments and did do the, the section that we got on our website on the incentive housing study. So I think the reason he can do it by himself is the fact that he doesn't have a large staff, and that he has done all the background work, and, and he's got a pretty good idea of how to, to get that to the finish line without it being a major production. So I'm kinda comfortable based on his letter saying how he is uniquely qualified there. So Susan, you're based on your recommendation, would you like to make a motion for the commission to consider?
I would like to make a motion that the commission retain the services of William Warner to prepare the affordable housing plan for the town of Andover.
Second test.
Okay, thank you, Susan, and thank you, Scott. Any, any discussion on that at this point? Hearing none, I will call a roll call vote once again. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Steve? Didn't hear you, Steve. You might be muted.
Sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes 500. Moving right along here. Okay, new business, special permit application for 23 Route 6 at Networking for installation of two gazebo. And And I see Eric Network. I don't know who's behind the screen there, but if you can discuss with us your application there.
Oh, um, I think it was late, mid, middle to late June, we put in a permit. We purchased
What is your name, please?
My name is Eric Adamcheck. I'm one of the maintenance coordinators here at Networking. I've been here thirteen years. So you know, I feel like I know a little bit about the town of Andover and yeah, I'm just surprised, I guess, how long it's taken. We, we ordered these garden barn gazebos early in, in the year, just wanted our clients to have a nice safe outdoor area, you know, to separate, to be in the fresh air, to get out of the sun. COVID and everything. Now it's pretty much the end of summer and I know things got a little lost. Somehow, so I'm not blaming anybody, but no, just like a nice, comfortable area for clients and that's about it.
Eric, do you have the ability to show us the, the site plan of where the gazebos are in relation to the various things I see online?
It's all in the permits. It's all in the agenda documents. The first one, I think it's called six two nine twenty-one gazebo. That's the whole the whole permit. It, it shows the copies of the garden barn purchases.
But do you, do you have that available to show to us if we allow you to share your screen? And, and if not, I can call it up out of our town website.
Yeah, you might as well do that because I, I have you on a, a different laptop.
I have it here, Jay, if you want me to pull it up.
I, and, and that was you, Abby?
Yep.
Okay, yep, go ahead and pull it up. That would be great.
You want the site plan?
Yes, please.
Okay, hold on just a second. You all can see that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I don't focus on
Okay, yeah, I don't want to go through that, Abby. You know, scroll back out for a minute. This is just the checklist and I will, so no, I was hoping for the very bottom, the very bottom thing on, on his application. Hope there you, oh, that'll do.
There you go.
Okay, yep, so how about, you know, describing for us on there where the gazebos will actually be?
So we have a we have two different gazebo. One at that number one near the front parking lot.
Okay.
That will be a fourteen by thirty foot gazebo. And then number two towards the back corner, oxygen, the fourteen foot. Still in that same picture.
Yep, okay, I see it, you know, there.
Right there. You know, installed by the garden barn, they put down all some crushed stone. It, it's, it's in the scroll down to the garden barn receipt for, you know, it says what they do for the site prep. We're getting a little walkway for wheelchairs over to the front one. I spoke to the fire marshal. One concern he had was a barrier of sorts between the parking lot and the gazebo. Definitely a good idea. I do have one other quote that I just got on Friday. It's for a twenty foot long ten by ten post. Kind of like a ten by ten posts with orange by eight inch rail. So something you'd see like at a state park, basically a barrier of sorts that would be in front of those two parking spaces. And between the parking lot and the gazebo, just in case somebody accidentally stepped on the gas instead of the brake. There's no electrical going out there, nothing like that. Yeah, that's about it.
Okay, and as I recall, I saw on the website that you did have a letter from the sanitarian saying he approved the location through the installation of the
Yep, the Eastern Highlands, they approved that. I have that in there.
Okay.
Through the property part in there and added as much as I could. Septic should be plenty far away from the back gazebo.
Okay, so go ahead and close up your screen so we can see everybody again here. And when, when I first heard about the application, you know, I, I started asking myself, do we need to go to the commission to have somebody put in the gazebo? And we were talking to, you know, talking it over with Jim and, you know, they, they had a special permit for the facility that's out there. And so we, we talked about a couple of options and then one of the good sides of the BB application is it got me looking into chapter twenty-one of our regulations, which is enforcement. But there's a paragraph in there that talks about, and it says, the commission may, by resolution, permit the zoning enforcement officer to authorize minor non-substantial deviations for, from the approved special exemption and special permits. So the decision for the commission tonight is whether we consider this a minor non-substantial deviation from the whole site plan that what they went through to put up the facility, you know, with all the parking lot, septic, all that goes with it. If, if we did determine that it is a substantial change, the next paragraph in here states substantial changes to special exemptions, special permits and variances shall be treated as new applications for approval and shall be submitted and acted upon in accordance with these regulations. So essentially, just like we would have done with the kennel, if he had actually had an approval, we would have been forced back into submitting a new application anyhow. Those are the two options that we have here. We can either do a new application to put in the, the two gazebos, or we can say Jim is the zoning enforcement officer and zoning agent. You go and handle the details of making sure that the, the gazebos fit in with, in accordance with all of our regulations. And so with that, I'm, I will make a motion, and this is to get us to the discussion point. I would make a motion that we do resolve the, to send the permit to the zoning enforcement officer to authorize minor non-substantial deviations from the approved special exemption, special permits, which we consider the gazebos to be.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. And so is there any discussion on that?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, Jim, do you have any concerns about taking that approach?
I don't. I mean, I, I essentially traded it very similar to a special permit, walked through the checklist. I did actually, I have a comment from the fire marshal saying that he will be signing off on it.
Okay.
There's, I have no physical sign off, but I have a memo that's actually, I, I was copying a memo from fire marshal to the building office, building official, who was checking up on the status of it. And he says he, I talked to the manager and he explained the plan for the barrier. Obviously, he was okay with it. That's pretty much all I have.
Okay. So with that, that in mind, I'll call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, for the record.
Go ahead, Dirty Branch.
Just two two items, for the record, Mark Brants. I, I didn't have the benefit of seeing the plans in advance. Is it, is, are the dimensions of these structures clear? Cause what I saw on screen, I, I did not see dimensions. Are, is, are dimensions on the plan? They can just state it, Mr. Mr., he just said what they, he told you verbally with dimensions.
Yes, they're all in the permit.
They were. Is that on the plan? Yes, Jim, it is. Okay. The only other thing is is that just, I, I'm not sure where the, the, which, which language, Mr. Chairman, you're reading from in terms of, of minor non-substantial changes. But I do notice it's section twenty-three point one, special permit exception requirement. It says the commission may waive the requirement for special permit exception, where it finds that a one special permit exception use is being substantive for another, similar use of the same law, et cetera. The new use require no greater parking or loading than the original. That's probably the case here. The new use entail no exterior change to the building or site. Isn't this changing the exterior of the building or site?
No.
No.
But sure, sure it is. I mean, you're adding
How, how, how can two gazebos not be changing the exterior of the, of the site?
Of the site, yes, I
I mean, it's a building, they're two buildings.
So Attorney Branch, the
The definition for buildings. Concern, my only concern that I don't want somebody else to come back to say, well, you let other people add buildings to a special permit without a public hearing or anything. Why can't I? I mean, it's the same, they seem fairly minor. It's not a question of whether it's a good use or a bad use. It's just a matter of what the right procedure is.
So the paragraph that I was
Is there, was there another section you wrote, can't, Mr. Chairman, like this?
Yes. Twenty-one point seven, Charlie.
Let's see.
Correct.
Twenty-one point
Two, one point
You're breaking up twenty-one.
I'd be happy to read it.
I guess that's the question. I mean, when I look at twenty-three, I see exterior changes. I see what you're looking at. The question is whether adding two buildings is not non-substantial. I think you have some discretion here. Just, just like I say, my, my worry is your attorney is always that, one, that you know what you're proving. That's always number one of my concern, that you, you know where these are going and how big they are and, and what they're going to be used for. Or as long as you're clear on that, as long as the application materials are clear on that, that's fine. And then the, the procedure is the correct procedure. So I, I, I leave it to you.
Okay, then I, I am always concerned about the precedence we set with every decision that we make. And, and so but I was, I was comfortable looking at this from the perspective of if you were putting up a small shed, would we expect the commission to act on that? And certainly there's, there's some place where we would draw the line. And I know these, at least one of these gazebos was fairly significantly sized. It's not, not small, like what we would put in our backyard, good size. But I thought that I was comfortable with having the commission vote on was that a minor non-substantial deviation from what we would consider a special permit application? And and I thought that was a reasonable use of our procedures to, to get to the desired outcome. And there's, there's a couple of different paths we could have got there. I'm not sure one is any better than the other, but this is the one I chose to, because you pointed me into this chapter to study up on the BB application. So I'm a lot smarter on this chapter now. So all that having been said, I am comfortable with the motion. It, it is up to the commission to decide whether the commission is comfortable with the motion. And with that, I'll call for a vote at this point, if there's no other discussion. Hearing none, call for vote, Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero. So you can, Eric, you can get with Jim and finish up what we've got there. If it comes back to haunt me, if somebody gets us in trouble with a follow-on application, I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But I thought I was doing okay by looking at the, the regulations and getting something to stand on.
I appreciate the time.
Okay, the next, next item of new business is the approval of our annual report. And I did get your feedback. Let me So here's a, here's our annual report. You've all had a chance to, to read through that. And I, I got two people pointed out, one typo in there, had corrected that. And and so I would like to make a motion that the, the planning and zoning commission annual report be approved for forwarding to the board of selectmen.
I second it.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion on the, the report? Hearing none, call for vote, Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero. Next item up is the approval of the minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, do you, do you need to remain?
Say again?
Do you, do you need, do you want me to?
You, you do not need to stay unless you, you've got further instruction for your new member of the, the firm there?
No, no, I, I think, I think the hard stuff is taken care of.
I, I agree and I appreciate you showing up tonight. Thank you very much for your help.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see all of you.
Good night.
Good night.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Okay, Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Susan. Any discussion on those minutes? And I had no comments on there. I thought for Abby's first, first go at, at the meeting minutes, she did an exceptionally fine job. Actually, for any go at the meeting minutes, I thought that was exceptionally fine job. Actually, for any go at the meeting minutes, I thought that was exceptionally fine job, not just the first go, so well done, Abby.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no comments, call for a vote, Ian.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Since I was not in attendance, I will abstain.
Okay, and I vote aye as well, so the motion carries four zero one. With Steve Nelson abstaining. Next, next item up is. Correspondence, Jim, any correspondence there?
No.
Okay. Moving on to administrative reports enforcement actions.
At the last meeting, I indicated I was going to be sending a letter to Steve Barnett, owner of the property at. Six hundred and something Route six, I did, I have not heard from him, I will. I will contact him in person, I I I don't, I can't really follow up. With a. A cease and desist, because I have to be a little more specific as to what I'm expecting to do, and just to remind the commission, there was. A number of approvals for the particular parcel over the years for special permits to operate. A number of different operations, just gonna have to clarify. Where where he is in violation, and I think primarily it's it's junk. And I will do that. I I will have to find him. I actually, I didn't call him, I I did not call him, I just, I relied on the letter and did not hear from him. So I'm gonna follow up on that, other than that. Just administratively, is, you know, a number of, there's a fair amount of activity, people looking at lots, looking at to do various things with. With parcels, it's rather time consuming. And we are. Transitioning to a. An electronic permitting system, which is probably going to be very helpful over time, but like anything else, it's just takes a little bit getting used to. But it's interesting because. We're such a small town, and there's not, people aren't there at the same time, so I think this. Permitting system is is going to be of benefit in that respect, hopefully, just. Changes tough. And we, I believe the town has authorized and is advertising. For an individual to work in the office twenty hours per week. And hopefully that will will happen soon, in the interim, we do have somebody working there. Kathy Lund, who worked there for seventeen years. And came back to help out for a short period of time, so so we're we're fortunate in that respect. One other thing I just want to touch upon is, you know, I had some inquiries about. Parcel that that is, a commercial parcel on Route six. And. A number of inquiries that would involve. Application of the floating zone that the commission. Commission adopted, and I just. I think it's a great idea, and I just, I I think it's envisioned is pretty complicated for 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 small. You know, for a small project, for for a single part parcel. Just passing that on as an observation, that's all. Just a reminder for what people know who weren't around, commission adopted a floating zone, which would, which it's hard to, it's hard to explain a floating zone, but essentially it's. It's placed over a certain parcel of land, a defined parcel of land, it's a zone change. And then a special permit. Is is applied for. What the. Regulation allows a lot of flexibility, allows mixed use, which isn't allowed elsewhere in our regs. Just reporting on what's happening out there, just kind of see what, you know, what's coming in. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Jim?
What parcel is that, Jim?
The old bus property, but big, big house on Route six. Actually, it's the one with the airplane on the back on Hutchinson, that's frontage is on Hutchinson Road as well.
They're wondering about the floating zone?
Well, I I, two people had inquired that, well, one of them wouldn't need it, but one of my thought would would require the floating zone, and I think it was kind of scary, you know.
Now, this is the White Tavern property, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I I, yeah, okay. And it's, it's a interesting parcel, you know, it's got a number of route buildings, beautiful old. House that, you know. Is is an asset to the town. But and it's also got frontage on Hutchinson, which I think is. I I just, I worry about development on six and and more curb cuts, et cetera, you know, or more traffic directly off six. That's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to item ten, commission discussion miscellaneous. Anybody got anything they think we should be talking about tonight?
I'm wondering if we're going to put a frontage and.
Flood zone.
No, no building in the flood zone on our agenda at some point. I think that we just need to put it on there and don't and get, don't take it off, Jeff.
Okay, yeah, well, there's probably other changes. You know, that we're we're racking up a list of them and. I was just reluctant to. Schedule the public hearing to do, you know, those couple of changes, I was hoping to piggyback that on to. To some other public hearing with other changes that we had coming out of. Of the housing study, but. We'll see, I've got, I've got what I think those changes need to be. I just need to get a, you know, the most recent updated word version of the. Regulation, so I can update it and show you the changes and that sort of thing, but. We can put that and and carry it forward, I I honestly thought that we would not get done with tonight's meeting quite so early, I thought it was going to go a little longer. Then. At the the last minute, it fell into place and became rather. A lot easier than I was expecting, so. It's that, I'm not sure how busy we're going to be with the incentive housing study coming up and. And how much work we've got to do on that, but I would expect that that might get started at the next meeting too. I would like to. Any any other topics other than, you know, Scott's continuing to try and hold me honest to making those changes, I said I would. I did want to make a couple of. Lessons learned from the special permit. Modification process. And we we hit it a little bit with. With the gazebo that. I guess there's a couple of places we could have looked for guidance on that. But to modify. An application or to modify a special permit, you got two choices, we can either, it's minor and we turn it over to Jim, or we start a new application. What we, what we had with, you know, the BB application was. That was approved by the commission, his application. And. The application had a pretty extensive set of drawings with it to build a nice kennel and all that stuff. And after he got approval, he. One, he didn't file the the final documents with the town hall, town clerk. And then he didn't build the kennel that was authorized in there. Either of those would have invalidated the the special permit, so that's how we got to the point where. It was not a modification of a special permit, there was no special permit to modify, because he didn't file it, then he didn't comply with it. And so that. You know, took us a while to to get through the facts of, we were essentially starting over with a new permit there. I think there might be some confusion too, and I just wanted to mention it, that when we use a special permit. There might be some thought that. The regulations don't apply because we're bringing it to the commission, the commission can do whatever they want. And that's not true either, you know, the the special permit. Really, you know, the significance of that is that buys us into holding a public hearing to get. More information from the public on on the permit. It doesn't, doesn't allow us to not comply with any of the regulations or any of that kind of stuff, so. We have to comply with all the regulations, but we also have to hold a public hearing, and that's, that's a significance of the special permit piece of it. So anyhow, I I'm a lot clearer on that now, that might not be absolutely clear to all you guys, but we'll keep talking about it each time we go through one of those and. Make sure that. We understand that whatever we do is rooted in the regulations and and that we're doing our very best to comply with those. I'm gonna look for my calendar here, just so we can talk about. The next meeting, I think is going to be on October eighteen. And that is all I have, so. Looks like it might be a record setter for getting done early, I appreciate everybody's help. Anything that I could have done to have explained the process better as we went through the applications tonight. Okay, and feel free to send me an email if you don't want to say, you know, on Zoom call, but I'm always interested in how we can. Better, you know, share what what we're learning there, because I know. It's taken a fair amount of time for the the regulations to start making sense to me. I think I've got a little knowledge that's dangerous. And. That's why we get Attorney Branch to help us out on those kind of things from time to time. Other than that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
The second.
Second.
Okay, I think that was a Scott motion, Steve second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Who opposed? I think that was a late entry.
Yeah, yes, it was.
We're here trying to get all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries five zero zero, thank you, everybody, and. See you next month, appreciate the help.
Bye.
Thanks.
Night everyone.
Good night.
Good.